All right, it's Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, seven P. M. We'll call the city council regular meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dan Zander, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for this time. We pray for our for our city council members here in East Point. We pray for our meetings here tonight, go through tonight, Lord. We love them, we care about them, and we care about the audience here tonight. Let this go through, let this go time, in thy name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Shadlec?
Here.
Great approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlec?
Yes.
Right, the first hearing of the public is open, would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening, council, my name is Carol Reed, I live on Almond, I'm a lifelong resident of East Detroit and East Point, Michigan. I was sitting on my couch and I saw the the meeting start, and I came down here to give my two cents about the dispensaries. I I I'm the girl that got cannabis legal in Michigan, I am Michigan's Lady Liberty. I'm the girl that started it. My short story is three people met in a bar on Nine Mile and it led to three hundred and thirty thousand people not going to jail for using medical marijuana and cannabis as medicine. You may remember Judge Ben Segesta. Mike Segesta was one of my friends that started Macomb County Normal. And Mike needed medical cannabis. And we fought for many, many years to get it legal. And recreational is here to stay, and when people do recreational marijuana, they should have respect for what they do and not, you know, be smoking it out in public and do that stuff, I don't approve of that. But many people do need it, and they people have been cured of many diseases from this, but unfortunately, Mike, when he couldn't get his pain medication, he killed himself right in front of his father. And Judge Ben Segesta is a good friend of mine, and I'm very familiar with suicide, because my husband, my brother-in-law, and my sister-in-law all committed suicide on doctor-prescribed drugs. My last husband, Ed, had cancer, and he was so afraid of dying from it that he went into hospice and they filleted him like a fish, and so he, to me, was death by doctor again. So there is a need for marijuana, for for cannabis, for medical reasons, and recreational is here, people do use it, if they quit drinking, they often will look for medical marijuana, so that's my two cents, Carol Reed, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I'm hoping that soon we will hear the results from the traffic study that was done in September, I believe it was. Back in August of two thousand twenty-one, Councilman Curly had asked about pedestrian and bicycle accidents on Nine Mile. Didn't get a response to it, there were no statistics available. Councilman Curly, in June of this year, asked, I believe, Mr. DeMonico, again about accidents involving pedestrians and bicyclists on Nine Mile, again, no response. I filled out a FOIA request for from the police department, and they compiled a list of accidents for me. I'm hoping that that's pretty accurate. Back in two thousand twenty-one, there were eight accidents on Nine Mile Road that involved either pedestrian or bicyclist. Out of those accidents, three of them were the fault of the pedestrian and/or bicyclist, either just crossing, not at a crosswalk, or actually hitting a vehicle with their bicycle. Two thousand twenty-two, there were six accidents involving pedestrians or bicyclists. Out of those, three of them were the fault of a pedestrian and/or bicyclist. Two thousand twenty-three, it looks like there's five of them, and two of them were caused by bicyclists or pedestrians. And two thousand twenty-four, I only have through August, there were two, two accidents, and neither one of them were the fault of the driver. You know, my point of this is that, you know, you keep talking about we have to make Nine Mile safer, and safer for pedestrians, safer for bicyclists, and you're wanting to reduce lanes. None of these accidents are the fault of the road, how wide the road is, and a good portion of these accidents are just the fault of pedestrians and bicyclists. They do this everywhere, you know, I drive down Grossbeck by Twelve Mile, there are people that are trying to cross seven lanes of traffic on Grossbeck, either with a bicycle or walking, they're not at a crosswalk, they're not at a light. People do what they want to do, so, you know, using pedestrian and bicyclist safety as a rationale for reducing the lanes on Nine Mile, I don't feel that that's really valid. I, you know, to me, it doesn't matter if the road is one lane or six lanes, people are going to do what they want to do. And I really feel that, you know, some of the responsibility relies on pedestrians and bicyclists to make the road safe for drivers, instead of darting out in front of cars and causing accidents and in addition injury to themselves. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, council, I am Juanda Buckles, Commissioner Juanda Buckles-Nia with the ACDC Commission. We are representing East Point in the most diverse and culturistic way. We had a wonderful turnout for our, so we'd like to thank the public for one thing, last month, a month ago today, for attending our art show, very well supported, we had over a hundred people count to come out to visit and see, they look forward to this event every year. And we are, and we we actually try to have this annually on every, every year, same time. I I'm here to ask about the applications that are, we're assuming being that's sitting for consideration, or maybe just not have gotten to, for the ACDC Commission. We're we're, we don't want, because we are in jeopardy of not having our meetings because of quorum. We know that there are people who are who have come up to us and asked to join the commission, and we know the applications have been turned in, and just would like to know that these can be appointed. And we also have a suggestion, maybe at one of our next meetings, with also making sure that the current commissioners are brought up to date as well. And that would be all I have to say for today, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Made it just in the nick of time, Karen Maragian. Let's talk about the animals, you know, that's a, that's a much better subject to talk about, and we can all do our part in protecting them. First and foremost, for all the animals that are here in this city, there are animals that are well-loved and well-taken care of, and to those people, thank you. For those who are not doing right by their animals, either reach out and ask for assistance if you're struggling, you know, to provide food, supplies for your animals, or you're struggling with the vet bills, there's a lot of shelters and rescues, you know, all over the place, that if you ask them for help and you ask them for resources, they'll do what they can to help out. Now, if you're going to sit there and just ignore the problem, and if there's an investigation, you know, you're more than likely looking at charges under the anti-cruelty statute for neglect or abuse, just depending on what the situation is. But no animal deserves that, you know, and, you know, thinking of the case from not too long ago, where the renters just let the dogs starve to death, and when they were evicted, you know, those that came in to clean up the house, found the bodies of all those dead dogs in the basement, and I find that absolutely repugnant. I know that that case has been sent over to the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, and I sincerely hope they throw the book at them, there's no excuse for that. I just, I think about how those poor dogs must have just been crying out in pain, because starving to death, you know, that's that's a really painful process. And for those who witness, you know, neglect or cruelty, whether you see it with your own eyes, hear it with your own ears, call. You absolutely have to call, don't sit there and have this attitude of, it's not my problem, or I feel bad for the dog, feeling bad for the dog isn't going to solve anything, the poor dog's just going to continue to suffer, you know, and there's a lot of work to do. We got to protect our domestic animals, we've got to protect our farm animals, we've got to protect our wildlife animals, because the clown car is packed and on its way to D. C., thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the hearing of the public is closed, approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes from November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting for November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlec?
Yes.
There are no scheduled hearings or unfinished business, so we'll move on to reports from administration, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, so I'll keep it brief, because it's similar to to my report from last week, we have the tree lighting on December fourth at six-thirty, and the board and commission mixer on December twelfth at six P. M. We would like to welcome Rui Zerbo, she has joined us as a sustainability fellow, and will be moving forward a lot of the initiatives from John Kraus with the Tree Management Plan, Bio-Retention Plan, and so forth, we look forward to her commitment over the next fifteen months here in East Point. We also welcome this week Chris McCollum as a deputy library director, so if you get a chance, stop in the library and introduce yourself to Chris. And then we also swore in another firefighter, firefighter Rosetti, which actually makes our fire department at full staffing for the first time in at least five years, so with that, Mayor and Council, I can ask, answer any questions you may have.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to Finance Director, Mr. Blaum.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the only thing I want to report is that I did send a report out on Friday with a bunch of attachments, hopefully you all got it, saw it, and read them, and that's all I have.
All right, does anyone have any questions? All right, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to address, I did receive an email from Ms. Maragian on Sunday regarding a disturbance in her in her neighborhood, and I immediately reached out to Chief Haynes, he and I had a discussion on Sunday, we also discussed the matter on Monday, and we will be taking action in response to that disturbance, so that's all I have there, thank you, you have to answer the questions.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions? All right, moving right along to new business, item A, receive and file AEW project summary reports, can I get a motion to receive and file?
I move that we receive and file the following project closeout reports, the twenty-two, twenty-three live water service replacement program, the twenty-three solar streetlight program, twenty-three asphalt resurfacing program, and the two thousand twenty-two DWRF water main replacement project, and the Mott Avenue reconstruction.
Second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlec?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Discussion and approval for Downtown Development Authority RAP grants project. Did any council members want to open up discussion on this one?
I'm comfortable with making a motion that is presented, unless somebody else has discussion. All right, well, I would move that we authorize the elimination of through access on Ethel and Court as part of the Downtown Development Authority's Civic Point project.
Is there support? Okay, I guess I think everyone's probably in your seat has saw Randy's report regarding the details on this project. Did anyone want to speak, I guess, since we didn't get support and opposition to the motion, or?
Can we just get a brief, sorry, I didn't jump in early enough earlier, my voice is messed up today, sorry, just a brief synopsis from the city manager about where we're at with this and the recommended motion.
Sure, so the Downtown Development Authority was authorized or awarded a one million dollar grant for a Civic Point project. That project involves essentially the space behind the library connected to the children's garden. I believe it was last year, the DDA approached city council and had requested to purchase that underutilized lot, and accepted the responsibility of maintenance. So they were looking to kind of create some form of a gathering space to be utilized in that area, and kind of a central hub that everyone associated with the city could utilize in that area. So they've had ideas of doing like arts and crafts shows, food truck rallies, different concerts, like we've had concerts in the park, enhancing the children's garden to get more people into that area as well, and allowing boards, boards and commissions that host events to utilize that space as well. So a part of the design also utilizes, allows the space to continue to be utilized as a parking lot as well, so it's kind of versatile, where you could utilize the space and close it off to be kind of a community gathering space, or when it's not being utilized that way, there would be carports and things there, so, one, when you are utilizing it for a concert, you have coverage, which we've, anyone that's been here to the concerts in the back area, in the summertime, it's extremely hot, the sun is beating on the artists, so those are things that we kind of took into consideration, but it could still be utilized, like during the week when there was no event as parking as it is now. They also incorporated some additional, some additional sustainability efforts, so E. V. parking, some solar streetlights, increasing green space in the area, and then the bio-retention area out there as well. One of the plans that the DDA had discussed was potentially requesting the city council to close, the initial plan was to create kind of like a cul-de-sac and close that lane off, but we have a resident that lives at the very end of Ethel and Court that has driveway access, and so the revised plan, and we actually had outreach to the resident that lives in that home, would be open to just eliminating the through access, so they could come from Virginia and access their driveway, but would reduce the traffic going from Grashit all the way through Virginia. So that would allow for food truck rallies to line up in that area, creating additional green space, you could have picnic tables and whatnot in that area to allow for kind of, kind of a common space for the community to spend time with reduced traffic and increased safety.
All right, did you have something else?
I guess I was just going to ask more details about it, so I'm looking at the the drawing here. Let's see, it's like the first drawing in the agenda packet. I see we've got Ethel and Court closed off, and I know we said that the drawings aren't a hundred percent up to date with the text, but so it'd be a street, you can see where the driveway is for the resident, so from the driveway over to Virginia, would just still stay the street, we're staying, right?
Correct, yes.
And then we're basically making it a one-way for that, the section of parking, basically, out to Grashit. And then what is the other half of the street right there, then?
With the lines through it?
Yeah.
That would be designated for like the food truck area?
And so with this, at least, the additional green space would basically, though, just be the, that space next to that parking? Otherwise, there's no change in green space, I guess, right?
So it would essentially be like utilizing this space here outside of the driveway as the additional green space, so it would close off that access, or that the east access to the parking lot there, and you would create green space in this area.
Oh, like the whole area, basically, where that area would?
Correct, and then if you put like part benches or something out there where people could go from the food trucks and eat their food in that lot, you wouldn't have traffic impacting pedestrians in that area. So instead of the, this entire space being green space, it would be slated over here.
Where, now, we talked about a stage, like where would a stage be?
So there's not a plan for like an exact stage, but under the carports essentially is what the design is meant for, so that you could have the electricity plugged in there, and you could set it up under one of those.
So I had a question, a question, in, you know, in the memo, it mentioned that the DDA would be happy to have feedback from council on the design, is that accurate, or is this locked in?
That's, it's, it was a preliminary drawing used for the grant purposes, it is not finalized, and they're more than happy if council wishes to add anything to it or modify, they're not set in stone on any of it, other than the project's ready to move forward.
Okay, and and I asked, because I think there was a December deadline to say whether or not we were going for it.
Which we've already told them we're going to continue on, so now it's just a matter of getting final designs and going out for bid.
What happened, so I thought, so the original grant was for three and a half million total, but I'm seeing this now here says two and a half million.
Well, there's been a lot of confusion in this project, just the way it was handled, the actual application had the project at two million twenty-six thousand and change.
The one that we submitted to the state?
The one that was submitted, yeah, to get the grant.
That is not what was provided to council saying we submitted it to the state, then?
That, that's what was submitted, there was no involvement from administration on this one, it was a bit rogue, as far as the application. When we got the grant, we got additional information, the proposal at that time was about two and a half million, which was way more than the DDA had been told when they applied for it. Through current pricing from AEW on the streetscape, we've been able to get it back down closer to the original two million, it's it's less than two point one million now, probably will be less than that when it's all said and done, but right now it's just an estimate until it gets designed and bid out.
So, okay, so the amount, oh, here, so I guess, like, the, in the part we were just talking about, like, in the parking lot, really only, I guess I'll go with the revised, since that's what, so the revised page, which is page twenty-seven, at least for me in the PDF, only, like, let me see. Well, I guess, like, maybe it's easier to say what's not, so a million, a million of the two million is not even going to be spent, like, in that area, millions being spent on lighting and streetscape on Grashit and Nine Mile?
Correct, so it's the streetscape surrounding the project, which was part of the original grant application. So it's kind of that whole area, you know, the carport and all that's in the parking lot, Ethel and Court's part of it, and then the streetscape on east side of Grashit and south side of Nine Mile, in that general area. Uh, Ethel and Court's part of it, and then the streetscape on, uh, east side of Grashit and south side of Nine Mile, uh, in that general area.
Are we doing the streetlights, you know, for the Nine Mile project anyway? I mean, obviously we're paying for it either way, but, uh...
The, um, what's going to happen is all of the decorative DDA lighting that's being torn out as the water main goes in will be replaced with solar streetlights or solar decorative lighting on Grashit. Nine Mile will get the same type of lighting, um, on the west of Grashit. So there won't be a need for the decorative stuff down Nine Mile. There'll probably be some solier, solar balliards a little bit lower to the ground along that stretch, which is why I think the cost will drop once we get a final design. But yeah, I mean, basically they're tearing out flower pot or flower beds and trees and lights, and they have to replace it all as part of, excuse me, as part of the, uh, water main project. It's just gonna, instead of a cast iron decorative light, it'll be a solar decorative light. Instead of a above-ground flower vase, it'll be a ground-level garden-type area. So it won't be one-to-one replacement, but it will be similar replacement, more modern. And the one thing with this project, because of the grant, the amount of money the Water Sewer project would spend, a portion of that will be covered by grant funds and then the, um, contributions, donations, whatever you wanna call it, from the, uh, philanthropic organizations. So that's money that Water Sewer will not have to spend that they would have without this particular project.
Um, I guess the, I, I don't have a problem with closing off, uh, essentially part of that street. I don't know, I have some thoughts on whether or not, so do we have complaints from that resident about when we were, with the original designs?
She didn't have complaints. Um, I think the primary, um, concern was that she just wanted access to the driveway. And so there was conversation of how it should be designed to allow through access, so they kind of tossed different ideas. Ultimately, we thought it would be best to just, um, end through access, so to still allow her to enter, enter, um, that street off of Virginia. And when she was consulted, I think just as recent as two weeks, um, she was supportive of that.
All right, uh, any other questions or thoughts from council? Do people want some time to mull over the designs more and think about it?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess in general, I think we should do more, I guess, if we're going to go forward with closing the street and doing that and discuss the different, uh, things, especially if we're talking about hoping to have a stage at some point, even if we don't build it now, I think we need to figure out where that would go if we're going to spend some money to adjust. And, and I don't think we can put it in the spot we're talking about right now because we'd have the exact same sun issue. It's gotta, I think, face north or it's gotta face, uh, east. Yeah, cause it'll be either evening or, yeah, north or east would be easiest to not have sun rain in the face of the performances or just obviously a, a better roof or something, but, you know, it's pretty expensive depending on what we're talking about then.
Has, uh, DDA been really involved in making these designs or were they just kind of presented as part of the grant?
Um, their focus has been, um, coming up with the streetscape design because that's gonna go throughout the whole DDA as various projects happen. Um, they've kind of, the carport, solar panel, all that was part of the original discussion and original design. There hasn't been a whole lot of discussion as far as how to close Ethel and Court, what sort of design that's gonna be. I don't think they care as long as they can do their events.
Okay.
They have, um, consulted with the library. Um, the former library director, Sue Todd, was very involved in attending DDA meetings as well and emphasized the ability for the library to use, uh, for their events as well and book reading clubs. Um, they also engaged, um, I believe a few other organizations. And then they've also assisted in, I think they've taken on like the tree lighting and different things that they would like to see, um, kind of in a larger gathering space. So they've been involved in creating some kind of common space, um, for the design.
All right, uh, would, uh, I think some people want a little bit of time. Would anyone like to make a motion to table?
What, what is that you, what?
Uh, seeking a motion to table.
I, I, yeah.
I gathered that's, that people wanted to take a, a, another look at the design.
I wanna take a further look on that, uh, Mr. Mayor, so I would move to table until the next council meeting.
All right, is there support? All right, I'll support it. We'll see what happens. Uh, motion support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember DeMonico? Councilmember Shadley?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion passes. Moving on to, uh, discussion on splash pad features.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I would move to, uh, direct the administration to ensure that the survey results are incorporated into the final design for the splash pad.
Support.
All right, any, uh, I guess, questions or discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry, one comment on that though, the, um, the list of the top features in the packet were not the top responses. I guess when we're incorporating it, if we just look at them in the right order though, the, the list where we say it's the top responses is just the same order as the, so, as long, hopefully we just consider it in the order of popularity, I think is what we assume by that, um, motion.
All right, uh, thank you. Um, discussion to reinstate Police Traffic Safety Advisory Commission. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we, uh, approve the reinstatement of the Traffic Safety Advisory Commission and further direct the city attorney to make, uh, the attached changes to the ordinance and add to the next council meeting for first reading.
Support.
All right, any discussion?
Uh, just, uh, a remark about the, when it was active back in the, back in the day, uh, they were very active and very productive, so I'm glad to see that we are going to bring this back.
I'll speak to it also, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think if we, so I've thought about this commission for a while. Of course, it hasn't been active since, um, uh, I've been on the city council. I don't know how long before that. I think it was shortly before that. Um, I think if we bring it back, we should keep basically the same, uh, purposes. Um, it's hard enough, I think, to, uh, find people for boards and commissions. And I don't know if just traffic issues is exciting enough, uh, for people to wanna come out. Um, traffic issues and maybe anything else, um, related to the police department might be a little more interesting, um, to people, I guess, just in general. Um, and then also I don't think, uh, the, well, the membership should be, well, basically the voting membership should be residents. And I think, in my opinion, should certainly not be a majority, um, city administration. Cause that kind of defeats the whole point of having the, um, having a board or commission.
Uh, I agree with that. I think, uh, if I recall, I think it was, um, under manager Deshane, I think we contracted out like someone to make traffic decisions and we had, uh, residents before that. Well, long before that, when it was active. So are you suggesting seven just voting members that are residents, maybe?
Yeah, it should be something like that. Let's see, before, yeah, it was eleven, but four of them were the city administrative folks and then, right, seven, was it seven voting members of the public, I think? See it right now. Oh, right here, oh yeah, B, yeah, B on page two. Yeah, that would make, uh, more sense to me.
So I, I'm sorry, are you suggesting, just going back to the eleven members on, I'm trying to read underneath that, uh, crossed out.
Yeah, I think it's, so it says seven mem, uh, seven citizen members, and then I think the other four were just, right, there should be four ex officio members. They don't vote. Yeah, it says they shall not be voting members. Which I think makes sense generally, every, uh, commission at, well, almost no commission has any voting members of administration. DDA's got the city manager in it.
All right, um, well, I'd, I would be okay with, uh, keeping that portion the same. I guess it would, um, how do other council members feel? All right, I'll make a, a motion to, um, amend the motion to make, uh, those necessary, uh, make those changes that are presented with the exception of the membership. Is there support?
We, I just have one question, uh, really just to administration. Is there any clarity that you guys feel that you need to bring forward in regards to that or why that was struck out and presented the way that it was?
Um, so it was essentially presented, um, to have members of administration that are involved with enforcing the laws. So essentially having, um, the individuals with the knowledge, um, of traffic laws that are seeing the accidents, um, and our experience with this. So we have several boards. I mean, Construction Board of Appeals is appointed by experience, um, in the field. Um, the Election Commission, uh, Rich and I both sit on that, as well as the assessor. Um, and then similar with DDA, the manager also sits on that board. And so this was kind of built alike, uh, to that, so it included members that were familiar with putting up signs, familiar with the traffic enforcement, had the ability to pull the data. Um, and also as, and the next portion of the agenda, um, is kind of working in conjunction with the TIA, which, um, the police department does on a regular basis. So, um, that's kind of the background, um, councilmember Baker, of our recommendation.
And then I guess, uh, second, I don't know if that would be for you or, or Rich, I don't know which way to go with it, but, uh, if we go with it as it's presented with the, uh, currently, do you see or anticipate any problems or any kind of hangups with going forward with it as it's presented? Or if we go back with the original language, you, are there any concerns that come up? I guess either of you in regards to that?
I mean, I, I don't have any concerns about that. The, this is an advisory commission, so...
And, and I was just, I guess, asking between also with Rich, did you see any potential issues or?
No, I, I did not. I, I won't be sitting on this, uh, particular, uh, commission.
Okay.
I can certainly make the changes as, uh, proposed and have for first reading at the next meeting.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm just, it's really just more just to inform, to be informed, like if, if there's something, a problem that you guys see with it, and so that's why I'm, I'm really asking and not say that I think it's necessarily bad one way or the other. Ms. Walton or anybody from administration, I mean, if I may, um, do you guys see any potential concerns going with the original language? Or?
Other than the number, I think eleven members will be a lot. Um, there also aren't eleven seats, um, up top, so getting it organized will be unique, but, um, other than that, that's the council.
I guess to council now, I'll ask, uh, do you feel that we should go with eleven? Or should we go with a smaller number, but still, as you guys presented with, uh, a voting member of, uh, a voting, uh, majority of, like, residents? Or is there a specific reason why maybe eleven?
I think the seven, seven residents and then the other four are city act. Or, well, it's one representing mayor and council, chief of police, traffic safety officer, uh, and youth counselor slash probation officer.
Well, being that there, what is it, about nine or ten seats up here, do we need to adjust that number?
Well, I think those, those four aren't, um, voting, so I guess I would just imagine the seven be up here and the other four.
Off to the side?
Yeah, that's wherever we can fit them, I guess.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just asking just not, not to knock it, I just kinda wanna
Yeah.
get a clarity of, of how you guys are looking at it.
All right, um, right now, uh, we have a motion to amend, um, by myself, seconded by, uh, Councilman Shadley, can you please call the roll on that?
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, and now we have the main motion on the floor, um, uh, to make the, uh, to go forward with the changes with that, uh, exception in the amendment. Um, any more discussion on that?
Very brief point of discussion. I think we just should just keep the ordinance as is and just start appointing people to it, I guess is me, so I'll just be voting no for that. Reason, I guess that's where I'm at.
All right, um, please call the roll.
I made the original motion.
You made the original motion and?
Councilman Curly reported.
I think so.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadley?
No.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. All right, uh, moving on to, um, item E, approval of the two thousand twenty-five Transportation Improvement Association membership. Would anyone like to make a motion? No one wants to make any motions?
I'll get the ball rolling. Hey, I'll do it and we can go from there. Motion to, uh, I move that we approve the twenty twenty-five membership with the Transportation Improvement Association in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars.
I'll second that.
All right, um, any discussion or questions on this item? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadley?
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to, uh, approval of the reappointment to the Parks Commission. Um, can I get a motion to confirm the reappointment of Linda Flans to the Parks Commission for term to expire October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadley?
Yes.
And moving on to the next item, approval of appointments, uh, another approval of appointment to the Parks Commission. Um, I am seeking a motion to confirm the appointment of Robert Plumpy to the Parks Commission with the term to expire October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik?
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on.
Councilmember Curly?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item H, approval of the removal of a member from the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would moved, uh, would move to remove a member from the Arts and Culture Diversity Commission.
Support.
All right.
I just had one quick comment on that. Yeah, I think we, we've discussed this in the past and I guess just in case anybody else doesn't know, this individual is now employed with the city and our city charter says that a, an employee cannot be on a border commission. I think we've discussed if that makes sense or not previously, but to change it, we'd have to have a vote of the whole city, um, so we can't change that even if we wanted to for certain boards and commissions, so, just so everybody in the audience knew, um, that's all.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, uh, payroll and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we pay the bills in the amount of two million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Support.
Uh, any questions on the, uh, payroll and bills? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Uh, yes.
Uh, the next, our second hearing of the public is now open, would anyone wish to be heard?
Carol Reed, lifelong resident of East Point. Um, I think our front door, Nine Mile and Grashit, has been so ugly for the, since Suzanne Pixley left. I just wanted to say it's really ugly and now with Rite Aid closing. I stopped into Safety Glass the other day because I do business with them and I, uh, the, the manager was there, the boss, and he informed me that he had to put in a new parking lot because there were some potholes in the front of his building. And it cost him sixty thousand dollars and he was also informed that he was, in about two years, it was all going to be ripped up because of the road diet, I think is a vanity project on a certain council member here, and it's going to be ripped up and grass is going to be put in there and he's not going to be able to even get his trucks out of the front of his store. So I'm once again complaining about the road diet because the people down there where I live by DeRoni Hardware, they do not want it. And I'm hoping and praying that this does not happen because it's stupid, it doesn't make any sense, and it's a bad design, and it's a waste of money, and I think it's a vanity project for a certain council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good eve, good evening, council, mayor, my name is Raymond Clayton, Jr. I'm trying to find out some information on the dispensaries. I seem to be misinformed, for the last time I heard, there were supposedly three plus one and two growth and distribute, growth and transport, I'm sorry. So I would just like to know what is the outcome or what's happening going on with that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wish to be heard?
Part two for the animals, um, wildlife. So, there's been, um, recent news stories that, they're not given both sides, um, and if you're going to cover stories, if you want to balance story, y- you have to talk to both sides. And this is in regards to the deer. So the DNR is whining and complaining about there's not enough hunters, hunters are falling off, uh, and allegedly the deer are overpopulated. Well, let's take a look at the population in Michigan in regards to humans. There's over ten million, the deer. I think they're trying to say now there's two million, but I'll be honest with you, I don't trust anything the DNR has to say. It's funny because for decades, they always talk about, well, you have to hunt, you know, to keep the numbers down. Well, if that were true, we wouldn't have this alleged overpopulation they're always talking about. But it's funny because they never, ever want to talk about how in, it was either in the late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds, the deer in Michigan were damn near hunted to extinction, but they don't want people to know about that. So, here we go, you know, kill, 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 and it's like, no, 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 no. Um, I wrote my research paper in my animal law class about the alternatives to hunting in order to balance out the populations and bring them in to check. And the United States Humane Society found great success through deer contraception. There were some of the deer that they, um, used targets, uh, I'm sorry, darts to date them. And then the rest, they just did like aerial drops and they found it wildly successful. That's what the DNR should be doing here in Michigan because, you know, first of all, it costs nothing to be kind to animals and secondly, why? Why as humans are we always just bent on killing animals?
You have thirty seconds.
You know, we need to learn how to live in harmony with animals. If they were able to talk to us, they wouldn't hesitate to say, don't eat me, don't kill me. They're sentient, living beings, we need to respect them and they definitely need to be taken out of the property classification and moved into a classification where they're considered sentient beings deserving of legal protections. I know, time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, uh, anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed, uh, we'll move on to mayor and council reports, uh, Councilman Baker.
Uh, that's it. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Have a safe ride home.
All right, Councilman Curly.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for coming out. Uh, the only thing I have to say, um, is we should be very concerned about Russia and Ukraine. Not sure what's going to happen on that, uh, Putin can't be trusted with anything, so all the things that we talk about at this table is important for us, but if that escalates, uh, we may want to forget about anything, so pray for that, that there's a peaceful resolution and that, uh, nothing terrible happens.
Thank you, uh, Councilman DeMonico.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, ditto to what Mr. Curly said about Russia and Ukraine. Um, first, uh, sir, um, uh, the, well, the conversation kind of changed today, like you were stating about the, uh, recreational marijuana licenses. Right now, it's not set in stone. We've talked anywhere from three to six at the table, but once we approve a new ordinance or whatever we, we do, that's when it'll be set in stone. Right now, it still is just a discussion. Sounded like today, it was leaning towards three. Um, and as for, uh, Nine Mile comments, uh, earlier at hearing of the public, um, a lot of the reasons that were brought up would be reasons why I was hoping we could make some major changes on Nine Mile. Right now, there's not a single bike lane in the entire community, so there is nowhere to bike really, um, so talking about bike accidents and things like that, it's hard to really get anywhere on a bike in the community. I haven't looked at these statistics that were mentioned at the hearing of the public, um, you know, uh, on whose like fault or whatnot it is, but I think just either way, um, we can make it a safer and, and I think it'll frankly be a better environment for the businesses on Nine Mile. Also, the, about not having enough room to get trucks out or whatnot, the, uh, they would have the same amount of space, uh, basically because we'd be getting rid of a lane and that'd be the extra green space. Um, it's not going to reduce space on their private property. So, um, anyway, um, couple other things, uh, going on in the community, thanks to a whole bunch of people over the weekend, including Ms. Homan here, uh, for painting some decorations in the community. I saw, there was a nice article in the Macomb Daily about that, so wanted to say thanks to, and I'm sure there were other people, but who I saw in the article, uh, Lakita Cobb, Sheila Yilinski, Stacy Zwicker and her daughter Audrey and her mother, uh, Margaret and, uh, yeah, and Kim, thank you again, that was cool. Um, I know, at least I know, Mike, you've mentioned that, uh, before, I think you kicked that, kicked that off, so that'll be good to see some better, uh, decorations in the, uh, median for the holidays and then, uh, yeah, tree lighting on Wednesday, December fourth. If you're free, come on out in the evening behind City Hall and then, uh, you know, we got Thanksgiving coming up, so happy Thanksgiving and then make sure, you know, it's always a small business Saturday and a whole slew of Cyber Monday, Giving Tuesday, all that. But hit up your favorite businesses in East Point, you know, I'll, I'll hit up, uh, Plaza Mexico for sure for some tacos and, uh, I'll, uh, for sure, I'll probably be going up to, um, uh, um, why am I, Melodies and Memories? Sorry, I don't know what's going on with me today. Uh, Melodies and Memories, get some new music, hit that up if you haven't been there, just a cool store in general, so, uh, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Bishadlik.
Um, I'd like to thank Ioanda for coming up and speaking about the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, uh, and especially the art show, it was very well attended and everybody had a great time. It was very, um, really a great opportunity for everybody to come out and get together and was, it was a lot of fun, so, um, I'd like to thank you. I'd also like to thank, uh, the member who, um, is no longer on the commission as well, she was very active and, um, we appreciated all of her input, she was a good, a good person and a very good member as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, um, thank you everyone for coming out, um, uh, I don't know if it was Kim who organized the, the painting, uh, thank you though for doing that, I know I've been complaining about it for years, I'm sorry I couldn't be there. Um, and, uh, that's all I have, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that motion adjourned, or I think maybe Councilman Baker.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishadlik?
Yes.
A meeting adjourned at seven fifty-nine PM.